All rise, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Evening, everyone. We had a lovely groundbreaking ceremony earlier at 3 o'clock. Well attended. Speeches went great, if I do say so myself. Just kidding. We actually shoveled some dirt. There's some great pictures. I guess you'll see them online. And thank you, everyone who's here that was attending. It was, I think, was a fun event. And it was only 10 minutes long, so it was good. Today, we have two presentations. First, from the bicentennial committee. The chairman of the bicentennial committee, Art Soboski. Excuse me, Sobolski?
Sobolski.
Yes, I know that. I just...
Thank you very much for allowing me a few minutes of your time. I'm the new chairman of the committee, so I'm just getting my feet wet. But I thought it would be a good time to go over exactly what the bicentennial committee is doing and where we are right now. And also extend the thanks to a lot of people who are making this thing possible. First thing I want to mention is that we had a gala event on January 6th, which was very well attended. 185 tickets were sold. We had over 165 people who attended. There was a band called Lights Out. And also, they came up with, I should say, there was a special drink that was made just for that event called a 1918 Punch Trump.
1818.
Which was, I can tell you, everyone had it, and there was none left by the end of the night. The nice thing was, was that Barbara Lyons reached out to the Doylestown County Golf Club, and they opened up the facility special just for us for that one night. As you know, they close for the wintertime. And it was really nice of them to do it. They also contributed a good bit of money towards the thing, and also, which was also nice to see. But the special thing I would like to say is thank you for the committee members who spent their time making this thing happen. We have Mary Lou Perry. We had Renaud Dahl, who was also the emcee for the event. Chris Snardo, of course, Barbara Lyons. And very special thanks to Stephanie Mason and to Tina Mizarelli. And also for Chris Snardo, who did the promo early in January, who pitched the event too with the telecommunications committee. So it was a very special night. Everyone enjoyed themselves. Now, we have other things which are coming up as well, and I'd really like to highlight this. And the next event is going to be the William Giles, Edgar Giles event, which is going to be on March 13th. So it's only coming up, it's coming up pretty quickly. And this is being put on Dell Valley University. It's going to be at 7 o'clock in the evening that night. And it's going to be at the Life Sciences Building. It's a free event, and we hope that we get very well attended. There's going to be some refreshments also. We figure it's going to last about an hour and a half. There'll be a 40-minute film presented on the life of Mr. Giles. And if anyone doesn't know, he was a premier explorer. He explored the, he was up, one of the first Westerners on the Great Wall of China. He went through Egypt. He did a lot of spectacular things, and he was very well-known at the time. So he's one of our premier residents of the township. And this event was worked on very hard by the Doylestown Historical Society, by Stu Abranson, and also a special thanks to Ted Filstein, who got in contact with the Dell Valley University and worked very hard to put this thing together. The other events we're going to be having coming up real soon, and this is going to be awful big, I think, is the Oscar Hammerstein event, which is going to be on July 14th. And again, thanks to Stu Abranson for working with the family, for putting this together, the Hammerstein family at Highland Farm. Also, the telecommunications board is going to be, plans on taping this. So we should have this also for future viewing. Other things are also going to be coming up, and that is, we are having a float in the parade, in the Memorial Day Parade. And this is being honchoed by Ann Woodbury, who came up with a spectacular model and showed it around, a 3D model. And the big thing is, is that, what we're proud to say is, what people are pitching in from the township also. We have, we dedicated some money to this, and it's under construction. But also, it's township personnel who are putting it together. But we're also going to need volunteers to help with the construction. We have a list of volunteers, but anyone who wants to do this in the future, please contact us, and we really, really love to have you come out there and help to show your strength. And I think it's kind of neat. We're going to have a police escort to put it into the parade, to bring it down. So thank you to the police on that. Also, we have some other things coming up. As you know, every year, we have an excellent fireworks display. Well, this year is going to be extra special because extra funds are going to be dedicated from the bicentennial people to make this thing even a bigger event. So we really hope that you all come down out there and to watch this. The other things I'd like to mention is that what we had today on display were some things to purchase. The hats. No, I don't look good in ones, I won't wear it. But we have this. We also have the, we've got T-shirts, and we have sweatshirts also coming out. And the thieves are not going to be that bad. I believe this will be run for $17 or $18. Sweatshirts for 25, T-shirts for 10. And we also have 250 bricks from the old building that we're just dying to give away for 10 bucks apiece. So, and they're all over there in the corner. But also, the one thing I really, really want to highlight are the Moravian tiles. Now, this is just one of the colors we have. We have others on the side over there. But these are going to be going for $20. There are one of about four or five that we're putting on display right now. They're really, they really are spectacular. And I urge people to look at them and to make a purchase of these things. $20 apiece. But also, a special thanks to Ted Filstein for being the one that went to Moravian Tiles and worked with them in order to come up with the design and to present it to the board. The other thing I would like to mention is that, it was brought to my attention that we haven't made a formal invitation to the Board of Supervisors for the Memorial Day Parade to come out with the float. And I'd like to extend that. Right now, we'll put it in writing, but I think it's important that the Board of Supervisors not only attend, but also show the strength of the township coming out and doing this. We're all proud of our town, and we want to make sure that we go out there flying the flags, just like we did for the Eagles. So, be happy to take any questions on anything I've said or haven't said.
The fireworks, July 15th.
July 15th.
Yes.
Yes.
And Tina Mazahary would kill me if I didn't make that correction. She was the emcee at the gala, Tina Mazahary.
Yes.
She'd be really mad at me if I didn't correct that.
But it's, I have to say, the gala, it was crowded.
It was good.
Lots of, lots and lots of folks. One last thing, I forgot to mention, one event, we have several other events downstream. One other I just want to mention is on November 10th, we're going to have Veterans Appreciation Day at the Senior Arts Center. That's also in the planning stage, and these events I mentioned are all free and open to everyone.
Flag.
Oh, yes. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Big thing. We have a competition for the flag, for coming with the new township flag. Right now, it's on the books to, the deadline is for May 15th. Unfortunately, I have to point out that we don't have anyone yet who's put in an entry.
Huh.
So we need to get the word out. We need to get people who are interested to do it. It's not just limited to residents. It's anyone who wants to do it. And, now here's the kicker, there's $1,000 in it for the successful entry. So let's get the word out on that one, and I'm sure someone will be very happy when they win that one.
Any age, any ability.
Anybody can enter.
Yeah, anyone can.
There are certain requirements, you know, I won't go into them now. But there are certain requirements. Contact the township offices or look on the web, and they'll have everything you need to know.
Thanks.
Do the, and I, do the people that are putting in for the flag have to be Doylestown Township residents?
No. Anybody, anybody can put it in. Any age.
Any age, but they do need to be Doylestown Township residents.
Any age as well.
Yeah, they have to be township residents, or somehow affiliated with.
Affiliated with it. But, you know, the people who have Doylestown Borough, Doylestown Township, you know, we all interact, so it's something that we all should consider. Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you.
Two questions. One is the oak trees?
Yes, oak trees. Right now, the oak trees, we have out, 200 oak trees are available to be planted. 40 have been sold at $200 apiece. We have 160 left. Right now, the target date for planting them is around early fall in September. So the nice thing is, is that anyone who purchases an oak tree will have a small plaque attached to that, and it's going to be in the new township building. So it's, all those things are kind of in the planning stage. And I urge you all to consider, or anyone who's viewing, is to making that purchase and either for your, remember your loved one, or donate the memory to someone else, or put your own name on it. It's a really good thing. Okay, great.
And my second question was on, around the flag. What's going to be the process on how you're going to decide that? Is there...
There'll be a committee that's going to make the decision on that. The committee has not been constituted at this point, but it will be when we have entries to be made. And once the, it'll be reviewed by the committee, then presented to the Board of Supervisors. Of course, the committee can't, you know, we don't have the power to do that, so it'll be the Board of Supervisors the ultimate decision.
Okay.
I think, you know, one of the things that Thompson does a neat thing every year, and it's like, design your futuristic car. And they actually, I know about it because my kid gets a flyer in their take-home packet, and they all do it. So I think we should probably reach out, put some sort of flyer together, and get out to the schools.
They don't let you do that anymore.
They don't? Well, Thompson does.
We can get, no, not through the Central Bucks. We can put it in the e-Friday.
Mount Carmel will allow it.
I know. But we'll send it over to Mount Carmel then.
Send it over to Mount Carmel. They'll take the handout.
We'll do the best we can to get one to the school.
You're stuck in the ballot box. You can't do that.
Well, hey, they'll take.
We did it through CB cares. It was, yeah. They put it in their e-packet.
Okay.
But you're right. Yeah, we can do something fancy like that. Maybe we should get Thompson to design the flag.
There you go.
They probably don't want the $1,000, but I mean, all right, well, and they are township residents. So they qualify. Thanks, Art.
Thank you very much. I appreciate the time.
All right, yes, thank you. Thanks for all your time. Sam Kalodny, our tax collector, wants to update us.
Yes. Thank you. I've got a couple slides. I was told to hit B. There we go. So, Tax Collector's office is now up and running at 11 Dwayne Road. You can see a picture of it. It's on my website at Doylestown Crest. If you go into that parking lot, all the way to the back and around the back, that's where my office is. This is, you know, just basic office hours, office schedule. Not going to bore you with this. I do have some updated services, though. So I can take credit card payments online and check payments online. And I'm going to just do a real quick rundown. This is, you can pay your township and county property tax bill with the button on the right. That's only for township and county. And then the Central Bucks School District says pay your school, your bill on the left-hand side. They're both on there, but they both go to separate bank accounts. So it's very important that you use the correct one according to your bill. This is what it looks like when you start the bill process. And you notice at the top, you can pick your check or your debit card. And here, it'll tell you what your, you put in your account number, which is your parcel ID. You put in your name and your address. And I know it can be done because I've got somebody paying it today. So I was very encouraged about that. And then you can see the bill subtotal, the convenience fee is, I shopped around, and I ended up going with a company called GovPay. Other townships have convenience fees that are above 3.2%, and GovPay is 2.5%. So I'm trying to do my best to keep the fees down as low as possible. And the check fee is only $1.50. So it's a flat rate regardless of how much your tax bill is. So if you are paying by check, it'll have you fill out this form and fill out your electronic signature, and then make sure you have your property parcel, tax ID number in there, just as I pointed out before. This just shows the convenience fee for the check is $1.50. And then it will help you review your payment. If anything about your bill or your information isn't correct, you can press the edit button. It'll take you back to the beginning of the process. And then you can put in all your check information and complete. Then you can also make your tax payment in person. As I said, I'm at 11 Dwayne Road. My office hours are Monday and Thursday from 10 to 6:00. And I will have additional office hours at the end of each pay period. So the last two weeks in April, I'll be open up on Friday and Saturday morning. And then same thing with the last two weeks in June, and same thing with the school as well. All the hours are listed on my website. I also can take online payment for tax certifications and duplicate bills. If you need a duplicate bill, you can order it right here. And I've got frequently asked questions. This is more pictures of my office. That's the, so if you come to this door, you now need to go around the sidewalk. And then you'll come to this door, and there's my waiting room and my office where the magic happens. And then if you have any other questions, these are, this is my contact information, and it's all on my website. So thank you very much for your time. If you have questions, I'll be happy to answer them.
Thank you.
Just one thing, Sam. You said we could pay credit card online. Can I do it in person also?
You can pay credit card in person as well, yes.
Is there still a fee then?
Yes, the same fee applies, 2.5% because it's the card processor.
Card processor.
Exactly. Online or in my office. But some people feel more comfortable about doing it at the office in person, and I'm happy to help them, so.
Okay.
Very nice.
Thank you.
You're good, Sam.
Great, thanks.
Thank you, Sam. Any other visitor or public comment? Announcements. We're next meeting on Tuesday, March 20th at 7:00. Daylight savings time is March 11th. It's Sunday, so it's coming soon. I mean, it's this Sunday. So don't forget. Set your clocks ahead one hour. And also, it's a good time to remember to change the batteries in your smoke detectors. Washington DC Cherry Blossom trip is April 7th, and it's $55 a person. To sign up, go to our website, doylstownrec.com. The educational, no, the Environmental Advisory Council and the Park and Recreation Committees are holding their joint meeting on March 13th at 5:00 p.m. at Dell Valley University Life Sciences Building. Everyone's invited to attend. Upcoming bicentennial celebrations. You heard Art talk about the William Edgar Giles History Evening at Delaware Valley University at 7:00 p.m. This is a free event. That's on March 13th. Dedication to Native Plant Demonstration Garden Party is on May 6th at 3:00 to 5:00 p.m. That's a garden party. There will be refreshments, and you're supposed to wear a hat. And on May 20th, you don't have to wear a hat, but a hat would be nice because it is a garden party. May 28th is the bicentennial float in Doylestown Memorial Day Parade. And I understand from the meeting that the Board of Supervisor members are supposed to be on the float. It wasn't that clear from Art's delivery, but is that right, Mary Lou Perry? Yeah, we're supposed to be on the float. We'll be floating. A lot of things will be happening. That's one of them. So that's May 28th, and I think you have to get there early in order to get on the float. Bicentennial memorabilia is on sale. Mercer tiles, you heard, the T-shirts, sweatshirts, commemorative bricks, selling legacy oak trees. They're going to be planted in township parks, $200 each. And even though he said there are 160 left, they're going to go fast. Soon as we get close to them being gone, they're going to go fast. So get one now. Create a new flag for Doylestown Township Contest. It's ongoing. It's a $1,000 prize. Deadline for submissions, May 15th, and the guidelines for the submissions are on our website. Movie and ski tickets are available. Contact the admin offices for those. And you got paddles? Then call the state, not us. 1-800-FIX ROAD is for the state, for township roads, 348-9915. And all state roads, in case you don't know which is a state road, which is township road, can be found on the website. Minutes, and I think it's now a button because it's easy to find, state roads versus township roads.
If you go to the road department, you will find the link for the ticket.
Links, thanks. Okay. Next item on the agenda is minutes approval for February 20th, 2018. Has everyone had a chance to review the minutes?
Yes.
Yes?
Yes.
Yes, yes. Any corrections, changes?
I saw one correction on page 11, the third paragraph. There was just a typo. It said Sinclair Enforcement Salisbury. It should be Sinclair Salisbury.
What page is that?
11.
I mean, what paragraph is that?
I think it's, hmm, let me see.
We have, page, pagination is different when you print it out than when you look online. Well, we'll find it. We'll find it and make that correction. Okay.
It's on page seven of the meeting minutes, third paragraph.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right. With that change, our correction, is there a motion to approve the minutes from the February meeting, February 20th meeting?
I'll move to it.
Sir Second? Thank you. On favor?
Aye.
Correspondences from the Pebble Ridge Woodridge Sewer Project. We got a letter from Bucks County Water and Sewer Authority. This is questions that have been, we've had in our, amongst our board for a number of months. And I guess the long and short of it is, there could be some savings if there's a group discount installation for the private lateral installation items. So that's about as best as they can do.
I find this, actually, the response, very confusing. Because when we went to that meeting, we asked for two things. We asked for a discount for tap-in fees for those that tapped in within the first year, said they were tapping in, and then also a 20% discount for those that said they would pay for everything upfront. Not the tap-in fee, but pay the cost of everything upfront. And the response said that Bucks County Water and Sewer Authority referred to Special Counsel Steve Hahn. He reviewed relating to tap-in discounts and indicated there was no provisions in the act. Well, the first thing we asked for had nothing to do with tap-in fees. And so I just, I mean, I have to say, when we went there, Barb, you and I both talked to them. And, I mean, I feel that we, as a board, if we're not inclined to do something, we, you know, you kind of know before you're walking out where we are. They really led us to believe that they were going to do something. And we've waited months and months and months, and then they're coming back, and they're saying, "We're going to offer a discount by groups of people getting together." That's not really, that, I mean, that's not really offering a discount. And I just continue to be challenged by the fact that they are going to be making an exorbitant amount of money off this project, all the benefits that are coming to them. And I still feel like we are, we have no options. We have no leverage with them, and they don't, they're not doing anything for us.
Well, they conflated, you're right. They conflated the two items.
Yeah.
So what we can do is ask for clarification. We really want a discount. If you're going to pay your whole assessment upfront, there should be a discount.
People are going to put $30,000 down upfront. There should be, I mean, it's the same with our taxes. If you pay your taxes upfront, you get cheaper than if you extend it up. And I don't, and if they're saying they can't do it, they're saying there's no provisions in the act. They're talking specifically about tap-in fees. I'd like to see where it says that they are not legally allowed to do that. Like, I want to see that in writing instead of them just saying, you know, "Steve Hahn said you can't do it." Well, where? Where does it say in writing that they are not legally allowed to do that? Sorry.
Don't. Well, we can, you know, we'll shoot them another letter, getting clarification, requesting the authority.
It was a very confusing letter.
Right. For their position.
For those of you who were there, I was trying to get some understanding. It's, they were saying they didn't feel that the tap-in discount would be appropriate because it would increase the cost of the other residents that didn't get the discount? Is that what they were trying to say?
It's, I think it's a flat charge to everybody.
Right. So if they, if they cut money off the people ahead of time, then that would have to be filled in the back end.
Can you tell us how that works?
Well, I think, why it doesn't do with any of this, because I recuse myself.
I know you don't.
But if you discount tap-in fees here, you have to discount them in Middletown and Ben Salem, everywhere else, because you have to have a uniform rate based on an engineering analysis of what's your treatment costs are. Tap-in fees are designed to pay for treatment expenses like plants and lines and things like that.
And ongoing maintenance and stuff like that.
And I actually understand that. And if they were coming back and saying, in regards to the tap-in fee, but we specifically asked them for people that were going to pay upfront. And there were several residents that said that they wanted to do that if there was an opportunity for them to get a discount. That just seems like something they could decide on their own. Yeah, sure. And it's only going to benefit them because there are going to be people that are just going to say, "You know what? I'm not going to tap in." And that's what we were trying to say to them. There are people that can just say, "You know what? Forget it. I'm not going to, I'm not going to pay the additional $30,000 outside of the tap-in," you know?
Right. Well, on that one point about the 20% discount if you pay upfront, I think we can get clarification on that. And then if we can explore, I mean, if a group of neighbors want to get together and offer, you know...
Yeah, no, and I, that, I think that's great, but I felt like that was what they were trying to say is in, like, "Oh, well, this is how you can save money." Well, of course, anybody that groups together and doing a project together, you can save money. That's not like they're offering the residents some huge discount, you know?
Well, they are making that available. Let's not discount that. No pun intended. Let's not discount that offer as something that they're doing should, you know...
But when I fixed the fence in my back, in the back of my house, and I did it with my neighbor, we went in together because we knew we'd automatically save money. Anybody's going to do that. And that's what I'm saying. I don't think it's a big concession for them.
Okay. Fair enough. Well, we'll send them another letter. Anything, any other comments about that letter or position? No? Okay. Public hearing, none. Solicitor reports from you?
Nothing. We won't perhaps discuss later.
Township engineer?
Nothing at this time.
Chief?
Just a brief update on the last storm we had. I think from the police department standpoint, pretty much every road, with the exception of one of the bigger ones, Slime Killin' and Sandy Ridge, has opened up to traffic. I spoke to PICO representatives late this afternoon. They're going to try and prioritize that. Unfortunately, it might not be prioritized before tomorrow's storm. Couple of things, a couple of things to remind us as we move into the next storm is we need to make sure that we stay off the roads at all possible. We need to make sure that our trash cans, the basketball courts, everything's off the road and out of the way of our plow trucks as they come through. It just creates a hazard for the trucks. It makes it more difficult. The, as we prepare for tomorrow's storm, unfortunately, the winds aren't going to be as bad, but the heavy, the snows could be potentially heavy, which could bring down branches. And I think you're going to have some more power outages. There's some, things have been in place that will be able to expedite some information passing to the radio room to PICO tomorrow, which will help us out moving forward. Last Friday, in a 24-hour period, we had over 50 calls for service, which is almost about a 50% spike. And 25 of them, or over half of them, were traffic-related due to downed power lines or signal outages. We worked, I thought that we worked very well with the road department, trying to get the roads cleared, barricaded where necessary, and overall communications went well. We did have a couple glitches with the temporary facilities, which we'll work through. And I think those things are addressed in a long sight with the new building. So I think... So I think we did well. We, you know, we did learn a few things. We did communicate as much as possible through our system called Crime Watch, which is a police department website, which was, I put out that email to the, all the supervisors early on the storm, where you can pass on to any constituents that might have reached out to you. So that's where we're at with this storm. Hopefully, we'll get through tomorrow.
Yeah. Two questions around that. I saw on social media, you might have had some issues with people driving around barricades. You put up road closures. Was that a big deal, or was it just a one-off? I'm trying to understand how severe it was.
Unfortunately, unfortunately, a road barricade doesn't mean road closed, unless it's, like, literally, I mean, road, and I'm being facetious. We put these barricades up there, they're for a reason. Number one, it's a safety issue. Particularly, Lime Killen Road is still shut down. And the reason it's shut down is, there's a pole that's leaning about 30% into the roadway, that if it gets a high wind or a truck catches it, it's literally going to come down on top of multiple cars. So it's shut down. Unfortunately, because of the span of the road and the makeup of the roads, it's shut down over about a tenth of a mile. So cars, we have to leave it access for the residents that actually live up to that point. But unfortunately, people see a barricade, and they're going to go around the other side of the road to get onto it. We have been very patient with the people. We've been out there trying to do it. The problem is the sheer volume of people that just don't heed the warning of the road closures. It is a citable offense. We try to avoid that, but it comes to the point where it's going to be an issue if they hit a live wire. So.
My second question was around, when do you put generators as backup for traffic signals? Because I, like, I saw some, do they all have backup, or only certain ones? How do you manage that? Because I saw one of 611s.
We have others, and this is pretty much, you know, it started out with Dick John, and Dave Tomco's carrying it over, and that's our road department. We have realized over the number of years, which lights tend to go out during which type of storm. We have a large number of generators that we get out there, and we communicate with the road department. If a light needs to be put on generator, we'll put it on generator. And we, as a police department, once it's out there, have to stay on touch with the road department, the communications, to make sure that the generator doesn't run out of fuel to keep it going. On top, you know, we got to make sure, then once, the problem with that system is, is it's cumbersome to the fact that, number one, we don't know when the light goes back on power.
Right.
So we don't know whether the light is being run by generator, or run by us, or by regular power. So it's a constant cycle. And that's why, you know, once the storm clears up, and we think that everybody went home, there's still road guys running around here, making sure there's gas in the generators, and communicating with us and stuff. So we try to keep this going. I tried to keep the Crime Watch up to date with our road closures, and which lights were on generator, and stuff like that, so.
Okay, thank you.
I just, just to the storms, you know, Steph and I were talking before the meeting started, and there's still close to 100 residents within the township that do not have power currently. And one of the things that I saw, you know, I lost power, I think most of us up here lost power, if not all. For me, it was a nuisance. It, you know, my kids couldn't watch TV, but we sat in front of a fireplace, and, you know, we were a little cold at night. But beyond that, I had no issues. The Doylestown Facebook group, which is fairly large, it's got close to 20,000 people on it now. And what worries me is that, and I don't know that it's us coming up with the solution, I think it's probably more of a county thing, but there were several elderly people that needed help getting out, that were hooked up to oxygen machines. I mean, there were very critical situations that happened as a result of the power outages. And as we're heading into another storm with the potential for this, you know, I know that Jen brought up a point about warming stations and charging stations, and we're limited here with what we have in trailers, but there, where, where do we go? And I don't know if it's, it's getting in touch with the county, but there was nothing about anybody being able, what I saw was goodwill of neighbors happening online. It was, "Hey, we'll help you, we'll come get your father, we'll get them in." But, but I was shocked at the lack of, "Hey, you know, we've opened up this school with beds." Who, I mean, there's people that had been out for a week with no power.
Let me just, let me just interject with that thought. We, as a police department, we have our Doylestown Township Police Facebook page. And we all, and we, and we have our Crime Watches, where we try to put out our crime information and our emergency services information. I have to, I have to reiterate, and you have to make it very clear to the residents, that we do not monitor Facebook.
Oh, I'm not.
I know, I'm going to move on with this. We do not monitor Facebook for reporting purposes.
Totally.
So my suggestion is that these people that rely on Facebook to discuss these things, it's a simple, we got to go back to, got to go back to prior to social media. What would we have done in those situations? We got to pick up the call, and make the phone call to the people that can make those decisions. Nine times out of 10, it's going to start with the police department, because we're there 24 hours a day, 7 days a week. And we will find that out. And to be honest with you, if we don't know that there's elderly, we cannot keep track of every elderly person.
And I'm not, I don't even, it's not even a police department issue. It's, I mean, frankly, it's an issue of, are we, what are we doing for our residents from a multi-municipality approach in terms of, we had a storm last week, we're heading into a storm, and they're talking about another potential storm Sunday into Monday? You know, I mean, where do we get, where does the county or the township get involved to say, "Okay, this is the plan. If we have major power outages again, we've got to have a place to just say, 'Hey, this is where you can come.'" And I think it's probably a county thing, but we didn't hear anything.
A lot of the power, a lot of the power issues, and we got to, let's reinforce another issue, is if your power goes out, PICO has told us, every single resident should call PICO directly. That's how they count power outages. Once PICO gets a large number, or a large chunk of residents in a certain area, they can then allow the municipalities to know. I know we were without, at one point, over 4,000 residents were out. I'm not exactly sure where those residents occurred. And again, you're looking at duration of stuff. We knew that that was going to end within a 24-hour period. So I'm not so sure, like, when we had the last hurricane, that was three or four days people were out, without power.
Sandy was almost five, but the other thing in Hurricane Sandy, Chief, was the fact that the county and the Red Cross started setting up shelters, and there were no Red Cross shelters established in this storm.
Right.
That's, that's what I'm saying. It's less about the Facebook, or, I'm not looking, I'm not saying anything about the way the police department handled everything.
No, I'm not, I'm not, I'm not taking offense to it. I'm just trying to, to make sure that we're all on this, we know what each phase does. And the Emergency Operations Center is going to open up again tomorrow at 6:00 a.m. And I say the county's Emergency Operations Center. And they'll be based, they'll have a crew up in the Bucks County Dispatch Radio Room, starting at 6:00 a.m. And basically, who sits up there is the Emergency Management Coordinator for the county, which is Scott Forrester, PICO representatives, telephone representatives, and everybody represented in the one room. And we try to funnel everything through them, so.
And that's where everyone should go. If they can't, if a neighbor can't help, there are services available, but they, they need to be coordinated in one spot.
So during Sandy?
Not us doing stuff, and the county doing stuff, and, sorry.
I'm sorry. During Sandy, we had, we had a warming, a warming station here, we had phone charge, well, not warming, but.
Comfort station.
Comfort station. And, yeah, and phone charge, but we can't do that because of our situation right now with the buildings. Is there any way we can coordinate with the county, with other municipalities around us, until we get our facility up and running, that we can do that? Maybe DelVal?
I don't know. Don't you, somebody want to?
Yeah, I mean, DelVal lost power too, I noticed.
Right.
Yeah.
We'll never know where.
The question's going to be, is who, how close we can get. I know the borough was completely out of power as well.
Right.
I know that Shafan, I noticed on, you know, had posted, they, I believe, in Lower Makefield, which is way too far for our residents to travel to Lower Makefield. In Solbury, we're doing a warming, charging, comfort station during the day.
The thing is, you can't get out.
But do we, do we get anything, my, like, have we gotten any communication from the county about any, other than, about, about storm preparedness, coming up on these storms?
I just got the ReadyBucks notification today about alert that there's a storm coming.
Yellow alert, yeah.
Okay.
And it says in that, I don't, I don't have it in front of me, but it says, "If you need services, here's where you go." I mean, it's, it's out to everybody.
Yeah. And I can't stress enough, people should sign up for the ReadyBucks notify program on the county website.
We should maybe just post that to our Facebook page, just.
It is.
It's on our, on our webpage, but I'm not sure if it's updated yet. Is it updated with a new website for the ReadyBucks?
I'm not sure. I'll have to look and see. I'll check that tomorrow.
But the county does have it on theirs.
Definitely. And I did put that on our Facebook this morning to remind everybody.
The ReadyBucks is good, and it's general information. I really, really would love this township to start promoting this Crime Watch page that we're getting, because that's specific to Doylestown Township. And it's specific to our residents, so they know what's going on in our town. When you get the ReadyBucks, you're going to get the, you know, the stuff throughout the entire county. And it might not apply to you. It's going to give you an idea of what's going on in other towns. But Crime Watch, and I believe that Ed in the back room, because I told him it might be coming, is putting the, the link to it on the television as we speak, hopefully.
It's scrolling right now.
It's scrolling through there.
Do you want to announce it anyway for everybody? Just, they can all read it down.
It's a long one.
But, I mean, and I just want to play devil's advocate for a sec, but like, tomorrow, the power goes out, and, you know, 8 o'clock tomorrow night, you have a resident calling you, saying, "I'm, I'm 85 years old, and I'm freezing cold." I mean, what, what can you do for them? Where do you take them?
I'll do what we've always done. We're going to go to their house, we're going to assess the situation. If they need help getting out of there, we will take them out of there, and we will get them to someplace warm and dry.
Okay. All right.
And if I know my officers, they'll probably buy them dinner.
And if you need the latest information on the storm, road closures, you just dial 511. And you'll get that information from Bucks County Code Yellow Services.
I didn't know that.
511.
I didn't know that. And I think I've learned a lot, sitting here just now. And maybe that's what we're all saying, the fact that we're discussing it, that we've got to streamline this, or get this into one communication bite, if you will.
The system is there. You got to let it work.
Right. And so when we get those calls, and we know, you know, the, you said it, from your introductory remarks, you said it, neighbors take care of neighbors.
Yeah.
And then, our township police department is a neighbor to these neighbors.
Oh, absolutely. I thought.
So, that's, that's how it works.
Yeah.
And so when you know of an issue, then you tell them to call the chief.
All right.
And you need an old road closure, call the chief.
One thing, one thing I'll reiterate, and I'll leave it alone at this, is, and Ryan brought up a very good point. That's what I'm getting paid for. Call us. We will take care of you. We are, we had 52 calls for service. We could have handled another 25, 50, we would have made more people come into work. We would have taken care of it. Just call us.
And that's helpful. And that, that helps me to be able to say, "Hey, if you're in Doylestown Township, and you're having issues, call the police department. They're there to help."
Let's not get away.
Or Ryan Manning.
Can't get away from the fact that that's why we're here.
But that's probably a good thing, when you see those postings.
Yeah.
And my guess is, is probably the Central Bucks Regional would respond the same way versus if it is municipal.
And the county bucks.
In the county bucks.
Okay. Great.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Good points. All right. Director of Operations.
As promised, included in your pack, it is the monthly executive report from JD Bravo Company, our construction manager, for the municipal complex. It's full of a lot of good information that Rob Galant has, wants to basically make you aware of. The next report, which is the March report, will be in your, the next packet for the next meeting, for the March 20th meeting. Additionally, I'd like to bring your attention that through the demo process, we've come across, as we've removed the building and started excavating, we found a number of areas of unsuitable soils, basically soils that you cannot build the building on, which means those soils have to be removed and replaced with suitable material that will compact, otherwise we'll have structural problems with the building. Including your pack, it is what we are calling Construction Change Directive Number One. It is basically been reviewed by Phillips and Donovan Architects, has been submitted in coordination with Tamco Construction, who is the demo contractor, and subsequently approved by Mr. Schneider, who is the Chair of the Building Committee. While this is not officially a change order, what it is, is we've worked with Rob to put this in place, and it is step one of our change order process, because we didn't know how much suitable, unsuitable soils were in the foundation area, the pad of the building. Subsequently, we approved change order, or Construction Directive Number One, and followed our change order process, which you have previously approved. We then have in process for approval, Construction Directive Number Two, and Number Three is coming. I would point out that this is just what's out there, and it was unforeseen. So we will have, we'll have official change orders coming, once we know the final numbers. And they'll be at the, probably in your next packet.
Okay.
So when you describe unsuitable soils, you're talking specifically about soils that will not compact.
Correct.
Just clay, shale, that kind of stuff. There's no contamination, it's just.
Correct.
Won't compact. Okay. I also would, would ask my fellow board members to, hopefully you looked at the packet of information that Robert Galant put together. One, if there's something that you want that's not there, let us know. We'll see what we can do to add it. But this is something you will get every month, so you'll have a up-to-date status of the project on a monthly basis. So hopefully, it's something you want. And so if not, let us know, and we'll accommodate.
Thanks.
I thought it was excellent, in fact. And I usually beat up Dave, so, Dave, you did a great job.
I'll pass. Rob did a good job.
Well, you and Rob did a good job. I mean, this is very concise, very succinct, very clear to understand. So I appreciate you getting this...
Even you understand it.
He said after he beat up Dave.
Thank you.
Gonna get me now.
That's right.
I'm next.
Be warned.
All right. Township Manager.
Just a couple things. Last meeting, we talked about roundabouts. And Urban Engineers, on behalf of PennDOT, will be here on the twentieth at your meeting to discuss the study that they completed for PennDOT. We have sent invitations to the surrounding property owners as well, to come to that, as well as the borough. Also, just FYI, we've been working with the DTMA and Buckingham Township and DEP on the Furlong Water Project. And we're having a meeting with the affected property owners at Buckingham Township on March twenty-ninth, from five to seven. It's an open house format with a little presentation at six o'clock from DEP and everything. There'll be plans of the project and everything like that. And that's all I have at this time.
Okay, thanks. Supervisors. Ken, you wanted to start with the Ways and Means Committee?
Yes. Just to go back to last year, if you remember, the Ways and Means formed a subcommittee to do a deep dive into pension recommendations. And that took 'em all year, three guys, and they meet every week. And then plus, they do work outside of that meeting. So they put a lot of effort into it. With the, looking at what the committee wants to accomplish in 2018, they have some other, same type of scenario where we have projects identified that we need quite a bit of work to do it. When you look at the number of committee members, being at five, you're gonna end up with the same guys, same people doing the same work, or doing work, all this time. So we need to spread that out a little bit. It's, I think it's unfair, it would be unfair of us to expect those committee members to routinely do that much work. So the Ways and Means Committee had talked about this, and you have seen in your packet a recommendation from Brenda, as the Chair of Ways and Means Committee, to increase the members, their recommendation is to increase the members from five to seven. So, and you can, you can see some of the details that they wanna work on. One is the work group to look at the Park and Rec building and how to help understand the financing around that. That's gonna take a bit of time. Looking at financial benefit for benchmarking employee benefits. And the third is to look more into, how can we do a better job on reporting on our five-year plans? So there's a lot of things that we wanna look into, and so the request has come to increase it. So we're asking the Board to support a revision to the resolution to increase the membership from five to seven.
Does this require a vote?
Well, you're just gonna authorize me to prepare a resolution for your next meeting.
Can't we just amend it?
Well, you should have a written document, but...
Well, it just says an amendment to the current resolution.
Why don't you approve it, and then you can sign a resolution later.
I, I'm fine with it. I...
Let's move to approve the additional two members to the Ways and Means.
Okay.
By amendment to the resolution currently in place.
That's fine.
I do have one comment.
Sure.
The Ways and Means Committee is a very specialized, talented group, and we all agree with that. Probably one of the most. And using their logic, when they presented the Pension Committee, they said we should go out and get the best qualified people there are, not just residents. So you should maybe take a look at having these two new members of the committee being from the community, not necessarily residents, as you did with the Pension Committee.
Yeah, the, one of the difference there, I think, Rick, is that the pension search is very specific, and it's very narrow. And so I think we obviously didn't want to be limited to just the township. But for the Ways and Means Committee, I can't recall us having any issue of getting members for that committee. So they may not, new members may not have pension experience, but they may have financial experience that would help the entire Ways and Means Committee. So that's kind of, it didn't even come up as a discussion in the Ways and Means Committee, but we certainly could entertain that if the Board felt that that was something we wanted to do. But I would keep it just to the, the first search given to the township.
Yeah. So I propose the amendment to the resolution. Is, was there a second to that?
A second.
Okay. Did you get the amendment? And it can just be a one-page amendment. Yeah, it just can be one-page.
Yeah.
Okay. I'm calling the question. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All right, good. You're good to go. Thank you.
Good.
Anything else, Ken?
Where do we, I can't remember my own notes here. The, for the Pension Committee.
It's advertised, I think, for your next meeting.
Ah, okay.
It's an ordinance provision. It's advertised, ready to go.
And the last email, and just to close it out, really was a great response, that the water department pension issue is resolved.
We put together a, we put together a whole plethora of material that convinced them to withdraw their proposed written finding. But we'll make some tweaks to that agreement to cover some issues that were not relevant back in the nineteen-eighties, when it was first executed. Fortunately, we're not gonna have a finding.
Yeah. No, that was a good deal. So that was a good piece of work. So thank you. That was all.
I echo that. It was, and I think it tells us that we've got to, we think we're right. We gotta stand up and stay behind it, and not concede or give in to, even if it's government agencies. I think we've gotta take a stand.
Okay?
Yep. That's it.
Ken, do you?
I do. The Park and Rec formed a subcommittee to address the proposed recreation building project. And the Ways and Means also appointed a subcommittee to work with the Parks and Rec Subcommittee on the recreation building project. So that's coming up. Also, the Bucks County Senior Task Force is suspending all meetings until further notice. They're considering rebranding themselves as a task force related to the senior center. They asked that if they are to divest themselves from the township as an official commission, that we maintain a strong unofficial relationship, including utilizing our audio/video and have representation.
Yeah. We'll wait and see what they decide to do. We can't divest them now. We're, they're part of us.
Right.
And we'd have to do a resolution disbanding our relationship with them. And I don't think we wanna do that yet.
Okay.
If we're gonna do it at all.
That's the conversation that's going on right now with them?
Yeah.
And also, Fox, Fox Twenty-Nine came out to do a...
A shoot.
A shoot.
A Fox shoot.
A Fox shoot at Kids Castle this past weekend, and, or I guess this past week. And Ryan Mannion and I were there to, to watch the shoot.
No foxes were injured in the shoot.
No foxes were injured in the shoot, but it was fantastic, and we were able to promote Kids Castle and the, and promote our fundraising webpage for it. So it's fantastic.
Good. Thank you. Down here. Mike, you have anything?
I don't have anything tonight.
Rick?
Could I take your time?
No.
No, you may not.
All right. I had written up all my notes from the DEP meeting we had yesterday.
Are you gonna read them?
Hmm?
Were you reading the whole one?
This is what I wanted to read now, but then Keith gave me his one-page version. So I don't know which one...
Read Keith's.
Or better yet, just...
Put a lot of time into this.
Just make copies and like, put 'em in our packet for the next meeting.
I'll read it. I'll read it. On March fifth, I mean, this is pertinent to the public. On March fifth, Stephanie Mason, Rick Colallo, and myself, being Keith, met with several members of the Pennsylvania Department of Environmental Protection, DEP, to discuss the Eastern Road PFC HSCA site. As you'll recall, some private wells on Sandy Knoll Drive area are contaminated with PFO and PFAS. The DEP provided the following updates. It's a sandy knoll section down from Cross Keys, off Old Dublin Pike. We've had a couple of hits of high, just barely over the limit. The monitoring well installation should be completed in the next month. So they put in monitoring wells around to see what the level is. And as an aside from Keith's notes, it's very interesting that it may be that the contaminants are at a hundred feet, but not at two-hundred feet. So those that are wells are a hundred feet are getting some contaminate, but next-door neighbor that's at two-hundred feet isn't getting any contaminate. And that's what these monitoring wells help. They can fix, find the strata of where the water that's not as potable as we like is coming from. Another round of private homeowner sampling is scheduled to be completed next. So we've already been in touch with those. And the extended sampling area is needed to delineate the extent of the contamination. So far, the DEP has sampled three-hundred-and-twenty, had samples of three-hundred-and-twenty to date in the Doylestown Township, some multiples. They keep going back to the same house. And to see if it's a volatile situation, or if it's a stable situation, which geologists like to know. Eight homes in Doylestown Township tested higher than the seventy points per trillion health level, advisory level, set by the EPA, which they set a little over a year ago, I believe. It, seventy used to be okay. Now it's down to fourteen or so. So that puts those above the limit. Once all the data is tested and analyzed from the homes and the monitoring wells, the DEP will begin to formulate what they call an interim response. The options, and some of the residents have taken some of these options, providing bottled water. I think five are doing that. The well treatment, haven't gotten to that yet, and/or installation of public water. The well treatment, I back up, three of them do, did install carbon filters. The ninety-day public period, comment period would be then open to the public when they get all this stuff together, which is gonna be months before they get all this data that they want to be able to come up with the options. And then there'll be a public meeting advertised, et cetera, for public comments. I had one other thing, in an effort to complete my commitment to Ed Ebenbach at trying to make his job easier. The, the PSATs puts on television, we got today, or a couple, well, you get 'em every month. We get a video, and it's very interesting. I mean, it's live. It's good information, whether it's about budgets or funding, unfunded mandates, et cetera, et cetera. That even makes it better. What I might suggest Ed would take a look at is, we can put that on our TV, DTV. And this way, we'll have live entertainment, Ed, that you've always been bugging me about. So we'll have live entertainment, as opposed to the billboard type of effect. So I hope that gets me back into his good graces.
There you go.
That's it.
That's a good suggestion, actually. It's really...
Oh, I got a thumbs up there. All right.
All right. Thank you. All right. Last month, I was tasked with writing a letter to the waste haulers. Actually, Stephanie and I wrote it, or I don't know who wrote it, but anyway. The letter went out, and we got a response from Waste Management, and I'll make sure you all get a copy. It was received during the snowstorm, so it didn't make the packet. But you recall the complaints that the residents have about their waste haulers and varying prices. Basically, there's like, six points. I can make them real quick. They, they don't have written service contracts, waste hauler. This waste hauler does not have a written service contract, so you're not gonna get a breach of any written service contracts, because they don't have them. They don't charge a cancellation fee if you cancel your service, but they will charge a pickup fee of your, of the cans you no longer use, because they have to send a guy out to get them. They see, their customers every time see a rate change, and that's, that happens because things go up. You know, gas costs more, employee pensions, whatever, everything costs more. So you're gonna see rate changes. They will talk to you, according to Waste Management, if you say, well, your neighbor, you know, pays less. They will, they will talk to you like you, like any provider will, and negotiate your fee down, if that's what you wanna do. They said, a lot of times, waste haulers offer a, join us now and you get a discount, but then, six months later, the price goes up. This is standard in the industry, so to watch out for it. They said ultimately that, since everyone gets different rates, different services by their trash haulers, this problem could be solved by going with one trash hauler. So we've heard this before. The reason why we don't go with one trash hauler is because everyone gets to choose, you know, who they want, not the township going out to bid. But they thought that that would solve the problem. So I make sure that you all get a copy of that letter...
Thank you.
In your, in your bins for next time. Following Parklands, we had a brief discussion about Parkland in our response as a township, what we should be doing for school safety. The nine municipalities got together through their chiefs, and we're gonna, we're gonna fluff it up a bit, add some political people, and continue the conversation with the Central Bucks School District Superintendent, Mr. Kopecky. And we're gonna be talking about security matters, including building improvements, the school resource officers, and that's a cost that's gonna have to be shared, if that's the way we're gonna go. But the conversation's started. I just want you to know, at least that's happening. If there's other conversations going, I know I got a call from one resident who says we have to take a holistic approach to this problem, and I so agree. And everyone, as I've talked to, it's not a political issue. It's not a second amendment issue. It's a safety issue. And that's the focus that we're gonna need to take going forward. All right, so I wanted to get you up to date on that one. Okay, that's all I have.
Can I just make a comment about unfinished business?
Sure.
In an effort to reduce the paperwork in my, in my study, and to help my declining mental stage, the unfinished business, we seem to lose track of it. There should be, there's a lot more unfinished business that, coming up. The illicit discharge, I believe, is coming next month. The Turk Road gentleman, the Pension Committee ordinance. And, I mean, we shouldn't have to keep track of all that. If we could keep it all on the unfinished business, even if it says not until, you know, next meeting, it doesn't fall through the cracks, I guess is what I'm saying. I don't know how everybody else feels about it, but it just seems like...
We don't lose track of unfinished business. We just put it back in the bin.
Would you like, would you like to bet something on that?
Well...
No, I wouldn't wanna bet. Mistakes do happen, but that's the point of having a...
But if it's here on the minutes, then, or the agenda, I should say.
Yes.
Then we won't lose track of it.
It's on the agenda.
Well, no. I mean, what Rick is saying for all unfinished business items that we have out there.
Yeah.
And there could be fifteen, whatever the number is. All fifteen would be listed here.
No.
And...
Then we'd have to deal with them on the agenda.
No, you don't. Because you would say, I'm dealing with this April. I'm dealing with this one in May. This one I don't even know about. What Rick is talking about is the log to keep track of unfinished business items. I think that's what he's talking about.
The agenda is for matters that we have to look at and deal with at any particular meeting.
Some municipalities will put a list at, after the adjournment, just for the Board's edification.
We can put them in our...
So it's not an agenda. It was just informational.
Put them in our packet. And then just put them in the packet, then.
Or page three, or whatever.
Whatever's convenient. Yeah.
One more thing to do, Madam Manager.
But she already has a list of them, right?
Mm-hmm. Okay. All right. And thank you, Rick, for that valuable suggestion.
You said dripping with sarcasm.
Dripping it off. Okay. Hydraulic drilling, being of unfinished business. Janine Mitchell, are you, you're here. Your colleague left?
Yes, she left.
I'm sorry. Couldn't get to it sooner. All right. Speaking of unfinished business, I take it you all reviewed the talking points and the draft resolution that was provided to you in our last meeting? We didn't get to it. I believe Ms. Mitchell couldn't be here, but you're here now. The, I don't know that we need to, need you to get up and talk about it, but, so the Board has... Your thoughts? Or thoughts? Ken?
I mean, I hate being the one always talking, but I think you know my thoughts. I, I, we've talked about this before, about staying to our, you know, staying in our own lane, stick to our own knitting. And our legislators don't, even when they live in the township, don't come to us and say, what about this? What about that? And I, I think that sending out resolutions all the time, albeit this may be the greatest there ever was, that setting the precedent of sending out and doing resolution work is not, is not what I think our, our charge is.
I can agree with that.
I, before we decide, I would like for Janine, if she would, to explain why you think this is so important. How does this impact, based on what you have in front of you there? How does this impact Doylestown Township?
I'm glad you asked. I've been listening very carefully, and there...
Put the mics down for your...
Is that better?
Yeah.
Yeah, thanks.
Okay. Thank you, Ken, for asking about that. The, this township has seven residents who serve on the Environmental Advisory Council. And it changes, you know, time passes, people come, people go. But right now, it's a very dynamic Environmental Advisory Council. And we're, we're interested in doing things, not just waiting for something to come to us and then say, oh yeah, that plan looks good, and then it's a twenty-minute meeting and off we go. This is a very dynamic group, and, and I understand, and so does everyone on the council, that our primary mission is local. I mean, we're a local group, and our, our real function is simple. It is to look at local environmental things that pass through our, across our desks. And, and then if there's something to say to the Board, we say it, make a recommendation. But it's usually local. This draft resolution is about the Delaware River Basin. It's not local, particularly if you think of it one way. The Delaware River has about seventeen million people who get their water in some way or other from it. Our township only has about, I think, about seventeen thousand people. It's a small percentage of the seventeen million people who live in New York, Pennsylvania, Maryland, and Delaware, who are affected by the Delaware River Basin. This, this draft resolution was designed to make a statement from local municipalities about a very large issue. But you know, when you think about it, the Bucks County Conservation District has a really great motto. The motto is, "We all live downstream." I love that. I mean, you know, the Neshamone Creek is here, but behind my house, there's a tributary stream that ends up in the Neshamone. The people who live up the hill from me sometimes do things that I wish they wouldn't. And the water that passes behind my house is, is, is muddied or has debris in it, for one reason or another. And I'm just one person in a, in a one township in Pennsylvania, but I watch it happen. But that water ends up in the Neshamone, which ends up in the Delaware, which ends up in the bay, which ends up in the ocean, and it's all connected. So, okay, I'm, I'm on the Environmental Advisory Council. So you know I have a bias. I wouldn't have volunteered for this. But I do have a bias, and I care very much about my local place. I love another line that Margaret Atwood says. She says, "Seize your place." I love that. She's the one who wrote The Handmaid's Tale. She's Canadian. But you know, one of the things that she's really concerned about are the Alberta tar sands. Boy, that's really horrible-looking. It's an industrial wasteland. It's an industrial wasteland. Well, we, we're not there, we're here. But you know, we're not that far from the Susquehanna River Basin. And the Susquehanna River Basin has some industrial wastelands that have been created because of hydraulic drilling. I, I pondered this on my drive over here today. I thought, why, why do I care about this? I guess it's because I've seen through my family the results of other extraction industries, like the coal industry, that was behind my parents' house as they grew up in Luzerne County. And that industrial wasteland that was created by the extraction of coal in Pennsylvania is still healing, almost 100 years later, or maybe, maybe it is 100 years later. So here's, here's really why I'm here. It takes courage, but it also takes foresight to step out of a little local mindset and say, you know what? We're connected. We're connected to every single stream, every single river that runs into that Atlantic Ocean. We have the Neshamone, we also have the Delaware River, it's, it's part of us. So I'm seizing my place, Ken. It matters very much to me that we take a stand. So this draft resolution is about having the courage, but also the foresight to take a stand and say, you know what? Delaware River Basin Commission, which I know you've, you've read it, you've read my talking points, you four governors and you brigadier general from the Army Corps of Engineers, listen to us. We are one township, and we're going to stand up and say, no, we're going, we want our voices heard. At least the seven people on the Environmental Advisory Council would like our voices heard. And that is to say, we don't want hydraulic drilling, AKA fracking, in the Delaware River Basin. But beyond that, and maybe more importantly, we don't want the wastewater entering the Delaware River. We don't want the Delaware River water used for the drilling purposes. It's our water. So it's not local-local, but it's connected to everything else. So if water is life, and we're trying to protect life by protecting water, that's what this draft resolution is about. So the EAC has recommended that you adopt the resolution, and I understand, I, I get it, you know, that we're just an advisory council, but thank you for hearing me.
Thank you, Janine. I have a question about the, the request here, and they now therefore be it resolved. Do you oppose the resolution, instead of saying that we, we support a complete and permanent ban, that we can support the continuation of the moratorium instead? Which is a less, I think, draconian at this point, until we get more information, that we support the continuation of the moratorium rather than support the complete permanent ban?
I think, I think that's probably a good idea. There's a second issue, though, as I understand it, and, and that is that the commission could vote to allow water to be used for drilling and, and storage along the Delaware River Basin. So there's more to it than, than maintaining the moratorium. I hear what you're saying, and I appreciate that.
Yeah, I, well, I'm just, I just don't know if we have enough information, I, even with the talking points, to, to say that this is a, this is something that we should ban altogether. If they've got these, this Delaware River, this commission that, that's got all the facts, got all the research, done all the homework, you know, I'm, I support them. I support what they want to do. Right now, what they've done is this moratorium, I'm going to support that, rather than, if something else happens, then we'll take a look at the next thing that's going to happen. You know what I'm saying? That's what, that's why I'm in this.
I agree. I had that circled as well, so I'm, I would be okay with that.
Jen, what do you think?
Yeah, I actually, I had a, a different question. I seem to remember reading, from reading the documents, that there was a connection with some of the water that our residents use and the Delaware River and fracking. So this isn't entirely non-local. This is very local.
In your packet, there was a map, and the map indicated where water, where, where in our township, or the fact that, that sources of water for the Cedar Crest Farms, Bristol and Upper State Roads, that area does get its water directly-
From the river.
From the river.
From the river.
So, yeah.
I was going to say-
Thank you, Jen.
We're, we're charged with securing the health, safety, and welfare of the Doylestown-
If it's within our legislative legislation.
It does. So I don't think it's out of our realm.
So I would propose that, that we support the resolution, but for continuation of the moratorium, not completely banning at this point, and take a look at it again.
Agreed.
What do you think about the idea of, I'm sorry, I'm sorry to interrupt. What do you think about the idea of wastewater and being stored? You know, that's like one of these other decisions that's going to be made by the-
See, that's what I don't want to know the information about. I don't know that, you know, sitting here as a Dawson Township Supervisor, have the, not only the education or the factual support, that I don't think I have the legal support for, or whatever. And that's a very-
Well, you could include the moratorium to extend to that, to that, until you hear more.
Yeah.
That would make sense. Extend the moratorium not only to fracking, but to the storage of water and whatever.
Great idea.
So I think just-
I'm with that.
Make the, make the tweak of the resolution, and you don't need to do it right this moment, but you know what the concept is.
Do I take a stab at it?
Me? I'm just an English teacher. Retired.
Alright, well, I'll tell you-
No, I, I would be happy to work with somebody.
Take a stab at it, send it to us, and we'll send it to Jeff, send it to me, and then-
And I think we know what the concept is.
We know, we know what we want to do, now-
We just want to tweak it, then.
Yeah.
Right. And then we'll present it to the board, and maybe, the, when we look at it again, maybe we'll have full board support, but if not, I think you have some partial board support.
Sure, that sounds great.
Are there timing needs?
Yes, there are. There, the, the commission is going to vote by the end of March.
So we're meeting on 3/20, that should work.
Is 3/20 enough?
I think it is.
Vote on 3/20?
I think it is, yeah. If you vote on 3/20, then I, I think we have enough time to, to tweak this a little bit.
Between the three of us, we'll tweak it and present it for the 3/20 meeting, okay?
Three of us, make sure I know.
One, two, three.
One, two, three. I, I'm here.
Barbara Lyons, Janine Mitchell, and Janine.
Okay. Let's do it.
I don't know my wallet, I don't know for sure.
Let's do it. Thank you very much.
Thank you for your work.
That sounds, that sounds like a, a great idea.
Thank you.
I think it's, because we're tweaking it to suit our township, which is, which is local.
And within our authority, what we think is our authority.
And with what we know.
What we know, what the facts are that we know.
That's right, with what we know. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Janine. Appreciate your hard work, and thank you to the committee, to the council, I mean. That's going to go in my case.
Yeah, I was going to say, you're the next one.
Yeah. Thanks, Jen. Alright, I think we can pass on safety in our schools, because there'll be more coming on the safety in our schools discussion.
Plus, the school district's involved in a chase force issue about that, so it's not like it's just unique to local governments.
Exactly. We're all involved in it. Alright, new business, West Athletic Fields.
Good evening.
Thanks for being so patient. I know you've been riveted, however, so you're so glad to be here-
Always.
Listening to our discussion.
My name's Joe Blackburn, I'm an attorney at the firm of Whistler Perlstein, here this evening on behalf of the applicant, Central Bucks School District, with respect to their application concerning the property located at 9 Memorial Drive. The subject property consists of approximately 10 acres and is located in the R4 zoning district. Notwithstanding that zoning classification, as I'm sure the members of the board know, the site is the, or the property is the longtime site of the Central Bucks West High School Athletic Fields. In conjunction with that use, the property is presently improved with six tennis courts, various grassed fields, including a baseball diamond, three maintenance or equipment sheds, and some, some various track and field apparatus. As a result of a study that the district undertook in order to evaluate the adequacy and sufficiency of its existing athletics fields, the school district has come up with a plan whereby this property would be redeveloped. In large measure, the, the driving force behind the redevelopment would be the installation of two synthetic turf fields. And the purpose behind those would be to, one, promote safety, because candidly, the fields there now are probably more akin to paved parking lots than they are athletic fields, and, two, to promote stormwater management concerns. In, in, on a larger scale, the project would also, I don't need to step on this, the project would also include the installation of one additional tennis court, the reconfiguration of some track and field apparatus, the relocation of the three existing maintenance sheds, and the interconnection of a walking trail throughout the property. The applicant appeared before the planning, the Township Planning Commission back in July of 2017, at which time we received some preliminary feedback on the plans. Based on that feedback, we hard-engineered the plans and submitted an application for the necessary zoning relief that would be a tenet for this application, dealing primarily with the fact that the synthetic turf fields, despite the fact that they are being proposed in large measure to increase the stormwater management, are nevertheless treated as impervious surface coverage. So one of the items was for, the largest item was for impervious surface coverage on the property. After receiving the necessary zoning relief at the December zoning hearing board, we proceeded back to the Planning Commission at its January meeting, at which time the Planning Commission recommended approval, recommended preliminary, has final approval of the plan and the grant of three very minor, really drafting type of waivers, which I could be happy to talk about with you if, if you would like. With me this evening is Terry DeGroot, the project engineer, and Robert Clement Hagan, the director of facilities at the school district. We can certainly make ourselves available for any questions that the board or any of its professionals may have at this time. I can tell you that this project has undergone through, through, since last July, a number of reviews by the various township professionals, the most recent of which being issued within the last week or so, and the remaining items contained there on are all will comply, is really administrative in nature, so they are easily addressed.
Okay.
Thank you.
Well, you're recusing, right?
I'm accusing myself, because I am the solicitor for the school district.
So, Mr. Colello, as liaison to the Planning Commission, were you going to speak to the understanding of the approvals?
I, I will do that.
Thank you.
The, Joe, you've seen a copy of this, Joe, already, so you can read along if you want.
I have, yes.
I have to memorialize it. The applicant has filed an application seeking preliminary as final land development approval for the renovation of certain athletic fields located on Tax Map Parcel 9-9-28. The parcel consists of 9.7 acres and is located in the R4 zoning district. The property is presently improved with certain athletic facilities. The applicant proposes to construct an additional tennis court, a synthetic turf field, an area for shot put, javelin, and discus, and certain improvements to the baseball field. In addition, other improvements will include a walking path, storm drainage, and other similar facilities. The plans before you were prepared by Terraform Engineering LLC were dated August 4, 2017, and were last revised February 9, 2018. The Doylestown Planning Commission, at its meeting held on January 22, 2018, recommended approval of the preliminary as final plan of the land development, subject to certain conditions. If the board is inclined to approve the preliminary as final plan, the following conditions will be applicable. One, compliance with the Pickering and Courts and Somerson Review Letter dated March 1, 2018. Except, however, the applicant has requested waivers, as Joe mentioned, from the following provisions of the subdivision land and development ordinance. A, from the previous, from the provisions of Section 153-20.C10, which requires that the location of existing watercourses, wells, on-site septic system, and the like to be shown within 400 feet from any land to be developed, as the applicant has provided an aerial photograph. B, from the provisions of Section 153-34.B1, which requires that 10% of the total net buildable site area be devoted to landscape requirements, such as buffer yards, street trees, landscaping on individual lots, and/or planted landscape island. And C, from the provisions of Section 153-39.C5, which requires edges of slopes to be at a minimum of five feet from the property lines or rights of way, in order to permit the normal rounding of the edge without encroaching on the abutting property. The township engineer has commented that perhaps a fee in lieu would be due and payable, which would then require a conversation with the applicant. Compliance with the Boucher and James Review Letter dated February 28, 2018. Compliance with the township's Code Enforcement Department correspondence dated August 25, 2017. Applicant to provide a directional sign to the existing restrooms that are currently under improvement. We talked about it at the-
We did, yes.
Last meeting. Compliance with the Pinoni Associates, Inc. Review Letter dated December 22, 2017. Restriping the single ADA compliant crossing at Memorial Drive at the existing location. Applicant shall comply with the Michael Baker International Review Letter dated December 9, 2017, and replace the sidewalk if necessary. Compliance with the decision of the Doylestown Township Zoning Hearing Board rendered on December 18, 2017. Funding and execution of development and financial security agreements. Ten, receipt of all permits from any agency having jurisdiction over such matters, including but not limited to the Bucks County Conservation District, PennDOT, et cetera. Eleven, applicant to pay any and all expenses incurred by the township in connection with the application. And twelve, the plan shall be ADA compliant. Did I do a good job?
Phenomenal.
Do you accept these conditions as outlined by Mr. Colello?
Yes, and to the extent that, as was raised, additional conversation might be needed with respect to the fees in lieu. We might have that now, we can have it later, however the board pleases. The, the nature of the request, I think, is from Mario, or the nature of the suggestion is that the waivers granted, the, the savings, if you will, from those would be submitted as a fee in lieu. Traditionally, you see that typically with waivers that involve the non-installation or a waiver from a requirement to install certain improvements. The, the waivers here are requested largely for drafting measures, so, you know, the, the cost savings that we are incurring from, you know, submitting an aerial as opposed to showing properties of them 400 feet would be nominal. Same with steep slopes, I'm not even sure candidly how you'd calculate that. There's no improvements being waived as a part of the Sado waiver, so in addition-
Mario, do you have any comments?
What about all the landscaping you're not putting in?
Well, that's an existing condition on the property. The, the property is currently used entirely as athletic fields, so, you know, and I think that waiver was requested at the suggestion of Ms. Gold, Ms. Judy, at the, due to, in order to avoid any further back and forth as to the calculation as to what area would be in fact designated for that buffer.
Well, it's that it's up, you know, leaving it up to the board, I mean-
How much is it, what are you talking about here?
I don't know. I mean, it's, the, the only, I mean, I wasn't looking for any fee in lieu for the, for the two, it would be, like, like Mr. Blackburn said, it would be for additional improvements, and it's landscaping. I don't know how much, if any, additional landscaping would be required.
Okay. So then there's, there's no skin off our noses here to do this?
No.
So it's like 10,000, is that what the-
I don't have a number. It's like maybe negligible, maybe nothing.
Don't give the farm away before you sold the cow. I mean, it's, um-
Terry, can you provide an estimate as to the landscaping that would have, would have been required?
We'll have more landscaping on the property in the proposed condition than we do have in the destined condition. The buffer requirements, although they are required by the letter of the law, they're typically there to provide a buffer from, say, an industrial use versus a housing use or something like that, or, you know, in, in, commercial, the residential, something like that. This is basically a park bike setting, I think.
Right.
But there's really nothing to buffer against, I don't see. As a matter of fact, if the buffer would be-
Grab the mic.
Hold the mic. Eric, let me go over there.
Sorry. Yeah. In, in, inclusion of a buffer would encroach on the area available for the athletic fields that's currently used now. So I don't think it's a matter of, you know, how much is it worth, or it's, it's going to depreciate the value of the project if we place more plantings on the plan.
I think the, the requirement is for buffer yards, so, you know, if we're just going to allocate a certain portion of the property to buffer yard, that doesn't necessarily require the planting in that yard, so we're not necessarily not planting, it's just the designation of maybe a certain strip around the perimeter as a buffer yard, as opposed to the certain plantings that would be contained in that yard. I'm not sure there's any requirements for that necessarily.
Yeah, no. I think we're pinching pennies here for needless. I mean, the school district is our, is our partner, is our-
Exactly.
And we should not be, like, trying to extract all these dollars, because we're only taking them from our residents- only taking them from our residents and putting them in one pocket to the other pocket. So, I'm, I'm okay with none of this.
So, we're looking for a motion?
Yes.
I'll make that motion.
And to approve with the conditions set
Correct.
without the necessity for fees in lieu of
Correct.
Second.
Okay. We good? All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you. Stay safe tomorrow.
Thanks.
Thank you, you too. Call the chief if you're having any problems.
He said it's time for dinner.
It'll look like you're eating.
All right, thank you, everybody. Um, we have, uh, a few more items left on our agenda.
Yep.
Eagle Scout proclamation for Jacob Minnissally.
Thanks.
Did I say his name right? I practiced it. Um, Jacob Minnissally's, uh, Court of Honor is on April 7, and I believe it's up in Plumstead. Is there a motion to approve his, um, proclamation for Eagle Scout?
Motion to approve.
Thank you.
I'll second it, and I'd like to make a comment, because, you know, we hear so much about teenagers and, and, and society. Um, Joe, Joe is not only an Eagle Scout, he's a cancer survivor.
Bless his heart.
Receiving treatment during his seventh grade in school, so, when people, kids tell you about the tough life they have, have them call Joe. Um, so, he decided to get the rest of his troop, family and friends to raise money and awareness for teen cancer and lymphoma by making and selling survival, survival bracelets. Um, you know, through, through his effort, he raised over $2,500, which enabled him to, um, buy things like Xbox games for the teens who were undergoing cancer treatment at CHOP. Uh, and he also made a meaningful donation to Leukemia and Lymphoma Society. And now, he's still in high school, but he's currently working on a documentary about Lieutenant Colby Umbrell, a former, a former CBE student who was killed in action. So, you know, these, these are the kind of, you know, people we should, um...
Be celebrating.
Yeah.
Yeah, exactly. Maybe he'll share the, um, documentary with our DTV.
I, I'm sure, I am.
That'd be something, he's a township resident.
Yep.
Colby was. Okay, um, is, there's a motion and a second, all in favor of the proclamation?
Aye.
Aye, thank you. And then, um, we also have a proclamation for Eagle Scout, um, potential Christian Roberts, who did a, um, two dugouts at Solomon Park, one of our, uh, one of our parks. Is there a motion to approve the proclamation for the Christian Roberts?
I'll make the motion.
Okay.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you. And we're all invited to the, uh, Court of Honor, so, take a look. Go if you can. Um, request to hook up to a public sewer, the Flugers at 995 Alms House Road. Um, this is a little different than the last one we had, guys.
By way of background, you recall when the Doylestown Municipal Authority constructed the Interceptor, um, they needed to acquire easements from various property owners along the Shammany Creek?
Mm-hmm.
And they acquired one from the Flugers, and in exchange for that, they gave the Flugers two EDUs to connect out the back to their, to the Interceptor. Uh, they had to use one by a certain time, also it was lost, they've lost that, but, uh, they are wanting to connect as they were permitted to do by granting, when they granted easement, with their one EDU.
And this is one of the houses in the 252 count, so...
Mm-hmm.
Yep. Um, but it's, it's really their legal right to do this, so...
I have totally different
Totally different set scenario.
I'll make the motion.
All right, is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. All right, that's a 5-0. Thank you. The last one was a little quiet.
But just a question around this. Uh, even, yes, I understand it's different than the last one we had, but, out of the last one, there was a, a set of action items we said we were going to do, and we'll come back to the board with that. And one of them was, um, instead of, how do we put our, how do we frame the number of potential properties like this? How do we know what that number is? Because I, I wouldn't want to come every two weeks and have another one, and then another one. I think we need to know, is it five, 10?
We have a map.
Or two?
We've identified a list.
Okay.
And not, not with respect to the other issue on Turk Road you talked about the last time.
Right.
But on this issue about existing EDUs, we've met and discussed and have a list.
Okay.
That looks a little bit like that.
There you go. Anticipating that question.
I can't see. You're going to give us a copy?
Yeah, well, we can get your copy, but, and I anticipated Mr. Snider making that question, so I pulled it together. That's what we're, that Jeff and I have been working off of, and he's been communicating with the people who have the EDUs. You see the, you see the sewer line, the red line coming across the back of those properties, um, and the tax parcels and information, um, and you see that two of them already have connected. Um, so they're not part of the project, because they already have public sewer. Um, and then the other ones have EDUs and have easements and everything, and have, have been, and some have attained attorneys and have been in communication. Um, and we'll have to deal with them, and Mr. Garten has communicated with them, and sort of give them a drop dead date to either, you know, come in here, do this process, or
But you're in.
Or you're in or you're out. Um, and, uh, the other ones, we will have for you on the 20th, the gentleman whose property we discussed is out of the country at the moment and asked
How many are there?
for the opportunity.
Six.
Six on that list.
So, if I, just so for my own clarity, these six people have the legal right to go to the Interceptor. It's not an issue, it's nothing for us to even debate or decide.
Right, yeah.
Yeah.
But it, but the effect is, it's going to reduce the number.
Oh, absolutely, that's why, yeah, yeah.
Do we, do we know from a cost perspective, is it less expensive to go through the Interceptor that's there, or be part of the project?
Depends where your house is.
Yeah.
It's not uniform.
More than likely, it's the Interceptor's cheaper.
Right. If you recall, we had, um, during the presentations in the summer, there was a property owner who wanted to be removed from the, they're on Do Run, and they wanted to be removed from the project, because they had a cost estimate done, and, and Mr. Collo, remember this, from some of the, our other meetings with the, um, our volunteer committee with Public Water and Sewer Advisory Board, and they have the easement, but they don't have, and the pipes running in the backyard, but they don't have an EDU. So, they have to weigh going front, going out the front part of the project. They're now part of the project, because they did not go out the back, but they were saying, they had estimates that it was 50, 60,000 to go out, or higher even, to go out the back door and go down to the Interceptor. So, you know, now we know the line in the street's 34, so, it would probably
Depend on where they're located in short, right?
Exactly. That's just what we said, yeah. So, it'll all
You have to redo, you're pulling in the house, too, sometimes.
Sure, if it's coming out the front of the house versus, but, so, do we, if we made an assumption, said the remaining six wanted to hook up to the Interceptor, what would be the impact to the design of the current project? Is there any impact on the design?
No, there wouldn't be any impact on the design.
Okay. And then, the, the one from Turk Road, did we, you identified the ones for these EDUs, is there any others in addition to that one?
They are the only one in a
That is the only one.
Yeah, tell them, there is no others that could get into that line except for that one property.
Okay.
And Sinclair has been out there, and the Health Department has been out there, and we will present all that at your meeting on the 20th.
Okay.
And the gentleman, um, Sletzke will be at your next meeting as well.
Don't start.
Well, just with Ken and I.
Yeah, I heard you, Ken and I.
Exchange.
Okay.
Unfinished business
All right.
list. Okay, thank you. Oh, we have to, we have to move on that, don't we? Was there a motion or a second?
I, I made a motion. We already
I think Rick asked a question, do we have anything to do if it's already approved?
I have 5-0.
You have 5-0, it's already done.
I didn't, it's just out of the ordinance.
Trying to get some clarity, then revise orders, take
Yeah, I was just trying to get some clarity.
Yeah.
Assumption I made.
Okay, so there's clarity, and you're out of the ordinance, and we passed it. Mm-hmm.
Correct. They'll be out officially when we get the final list of who's in and who's out.
Okay, but they are getting their own system, so...
They have a deadline to do it, otherwise they're in, though.
July.
July 19.
All right, there you go. All right, um, anything else? Announcements. March 20th is our next meeting at 7:00 PM. Daily savings time this weekend, Sunday. Turn your clocks ahead, March 11th, um, and also replace your batteries for your smoke detectors. Washington DC Cherry Blossom trip is four, uh, on April 7th, it's $55. You sign up through DoylestownRec.com. The EAC and Park and Recreation Committees are holding their joint, um, joint meeting on March 13th at 5:00 PM at Del Valle University Life Sciences. Everyone is welcome to attend. Upcoming bicentennial celebrations on the 13th of March, William Edward Guile History Event, um, at Delaware Valley University at 7:00 PM. That's a free event. Also a free event is the dedication of native plant garden, demonstration garden, um, party on, uh, the 6th of May, 3 to 5:00 PM. And the bicentennial float and the Doylestown Memorial Day Parade is on the 28th of May, and all of the supervisors have to wear, um, garb, um, 2000, I'm from 1818, and be on the float. Bicentennial memorabilia is for sale, marisha tiles, t-shirts, hats, commemorative bricks and legacy oak trees. And the create a new flag competition ends on Mar, May 15th. Even if I have to design the flag myself, there's going to be an entry.
You're going to take the $1,000?
I'm going to take the $1,000, too. Damn right, yeah, I'm going to be
New guy?
Um, guidelines can be found on the website. Movie and ski tickets are available. Contact the administrative offices for prices and availability, and if you've got potholes, go to our website under, um, uh, roads, and see if you're a township road or a, um, a state road, and if it's a state road, go 1-800-FIXROAD, and you should be all done. Seeing no other business, we are adjourned. Thank you very much, everyone. Documents to be signed. Can I, can I just talk to Janine for a second?
Put a little
Janine, I think this is a real